Evening, everybody. We are going to get started with our meeting tonight. So if I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is over in the corner there for those in the house. All right, I need a motion to approve the present agenda. Yep, all in favor? Okay. Public comment, the board invites the public to make any comment they would like regarding any district business that does not have to be agenda related. There are very few people here tonight in the house. Do we have anybody online? Okay, all right. It is a busy night for Chatham all over the place. Okay, next is board comment. I have one, but if anybody else has something they'd like to. Okay. All right, so we know that we we know that we just passed the budget.
Can I take credit to all my babies?
Yeah, it's a great team you put together there, but I mean, our email we got from you was what, 1030, 1040? So, yeah, so flowers at least we could do. We haven't even had agendas from your line, so. All right, now we're moving on to an exciting time in the year for educators. The tenure administrator recognition. So the following administrators will be granted tenure today, and the board would like to acknowledge them. These are Mr. Brian Simon, People Personnel Services Director, and Mr. Michael Stead, Assistant Principal at the Middle School. So congratulations to you both. That means that they can never leave.
So I want to echo Fred's comments. You know, Brian has been around a long time and people question why he's just now getting tenure. It just took him that long. No, if you remember about three years ago, we changed Brian's title from Director Special Ed to Director of PPS. So he's being re-tenured under that new title. So we are, Brian does an amazing job for those of you who interact with him. He is amazing with our parents and our students with special needs. He's an integral part of the superintendent and district team, and I can't thank him enough and little token of our appreciation for your tenure. And also tonight, Mr. Stead, who's being tenured in the area of our Assistant Principal at the Middle School. Mike has been a longtime elementary teacher. He was our innovation coach. He is probably one of the most creative and innovative people that I've met. He always thinks and approaches things so differently than than many of us, and with that, we get diverse solutions to difficult problems. I have been following him through the beginning of his administrative career, which started during the pandemic, which if anybody has had that challenge, that in and of itself is a difficult task to overcome. But with that, Mike, we really appreciate you creating a really dynamic team with Brett at the middle school. I know you helped some of our new teachers there get over the hump of their beginning of their career. And I can thank you for the work that you and Brett are doing over there. So thank you and congratulations on your tenure. And I think I'll let you do that during the superintendent's.
All right, we have a superintendent's report.
I hope so. Well, first of all, something that I want to recognize a few board members this evening. We were just informed recently by the New York State School Board Association of some accomplishments, some milestones. As some of you may or may not know, there are some required courses that the board members need to take to to be part of a school board that was instituted several years ago to ensure the quality of governance in our districts across the state. So tonight, I am pleased to recognize Fred Hutchinson for his leadership development training totaling 75 points. So we have a little token of. Next, Mary Ann Pirro, the same 75-point milestone. And since I'm getting up, I'm also going to recognize Don Friedman for her accomplishments and her milestone. Okay, I also want to just piggyback on what Fred said about Debbie more so because this year, like like no other year in the past, the County Board of Elections informed us that we'd no longer be able to use their equipment and nor would they facilitate the poll workers for us. So in a given year, it's a lot of work that Debbie goes through to pull this all together. But this year, in establishing a relationship with the assistance of Mike with a new company, buying the machine, renting the machine, getting training and all the other complexities and learning how when it jams on election night, how you fix it and getting over those little obstacles. So again, my appreciation to Debbie for everything that she's done. She puts in a lot of late evenings after her normal contractual hours to make sure that everything goes well. So thank you. We do have a note in anticipation of the June 25th meeting. We had discussed this internally not too long ago, but because there's been a slight change in the way we're approaching our capital project with the rebidding, the rebidding that was necessary and the bidding that's going to be open next Thursday, the 30th. We had initially adopted, the board had initially adopted next year's annual calendar in anticipation of a lot of construction that would take place and the possibility of needing a little bit extra time upfront for teachers to get their classrooms back in order. Since that's not going to be placed, and we think it's more prudent to adjust the professional development schedule upfront at the beginning of the school year. Initially, we had proposed doing three of the four superintendent's conference days upfront rather than the two that we traditionally do. We are going to back off on that, and we've repositioned the third day, try to go slow so I'm not confusing. So we're going back to only two professional development superintendent's conference days upfront, which would be the third and the fourth. September 5th, which was, which is a Thursday and was going to be a professional development day, is now going to be put back on November 5th, which is Election Day, which is where we've traditionally held it. That's always well received because that's a day for which we are able to not have students in the district at the same time that will have a lot of traffic coming through for the annual presidential election. So we're happy to do that. And then we're going to move the half day of professional development that was scheduled for November 5th to a date in February, Tuesday in February, and I do, I think it may be February 5th, but don't quote me on it. So the board will receive a, is it the fourth? The board will receive a amended calendar to adopt at the June 25th meeting. So that's just a public service announcement. Another kind of public service announcement on our website and on our Facebook page, we have just announced our annual offering for the Arbor Academy at the Middle School. This is for students in grades five through eight. It's actually coordinated by Mr. Stead for students who are interested in, and I love the way it was written on the Facebook post. So for students, it's a little bit of academic, it's a little bit of fun, it's a little bit of exercise. And so if parents have students who are interested, there is a Google form for them to complete and fill out so that we can get them registered for the summer.
And one more time, what was that again?
This is all, it's called the Arbor Academy.
Okay, thank you.
That's traditionally, I mean, it's been, that was named well before I was here, so it's been a longstanding tradition. And although, Mike, are we getting, is that taking place at MED though? Yeah, so physically, the last couple of years, we've located it at MED out of convenience for the teachers who run the program. So it's called the Middle School Arbor, Arbor Academy, but it's actually run through the middle school. And if you notice, it's grades five through eight, so we're capturing some of those students who are transitioning from elementary to middle school and could use a little extra help in going from an environment that's much more intimate to, you know, middle school, which can be a little bit scary for some students, and also those students in eighth grade who may need a little more time to understand how to transition into high school to be successful. So
I'm sorry, is that only because I like to ask the clarifying questions that I think as a parent I would have. So it's fourth graders going to fifth grade? Fifth going to sixth, sixth going to seventh, but current eighth or current seventh, how's that?
Yes.
Okay, so if I have an eighth grade parent, I'm really thinking about the high school program, or if I am an eighth grade parent, I'm thinking about the high school program, not the middle school program. But if I'm a fourth grade parent, ending my year with my kid in fourth grade, I'm going to look at the program for fifth.
There is not a fourth grade program.
They're going to be in fifth. Okay, that's my question. Okay, thank you.
So just for point of clarification, let me, let me back up so that we, you're, we've talked about this a little bit, but just so that you, so there have been years where we've had enrichment programs for summer at the elementary level. Not knowing where we were going to be with our building utilization and capital project, this year we scaled back a little bit. We have our, our traditional ESY Extended School Year Program, which is a byproduct of our special education program. Through the annual evaluations of our students with IEPs, it's determined whether they will need some, they will face some regression and they need some summer programming. That's a program that Brian manages and that runs roughly from July 1st to August, August 9th, and that's, I think, 8:30 to 12:30? 8:30 to 1:30. That's for the students who have IEPs and have been identified by Brian through that process to participate, staying in school year. This year, we're also offering two classrooms, and correct, I'm kind of hesitating, for students who may need a little extra help in grades, Brian, help me here too. Are we going pre, we're going K to five? K to four, right? Going into first and. Okay, right. Well, you're talking about, so for your program, and if I'm confusing, I apologize. So we are also running our two self-contained programs for special education, and that is our middle, traditional middle school program. And this year, through Brian's leadership and through cooperation with Ms. Rossi, we're not, we're, we are not subcontracting our self-contained classes at high school, or we're doing that in-house. So for Brian's program, we have the whole continuum for special ed, correct? But we're also adding, how many, how many classrooms through Kristen? For just students who need, two, right, okay. So two additional classrooms for those students who are identified that may have an IEP but not be required to have ES, have extended school year, may have a 504 or just need a little extra boost identified by a teacher, and we're running two classrooms in that regard. What we're not doing this year is the larger kind of summer enrichment program that we've done at the elementary school in the past.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good information.
Okay, good. I hope I didn't confuse anybody. And then at the high school, and what Mike was talking about, we're running our traditional credit recovery program, predominantly an online program that's facilitated through Questar. We do have, we have a teaching position and a teaching assistant position, although the teaching position is generally split by two individuals who don't want to work the entire summer but share that responsibility. So that's where, and we're running that out of the middle school this year because we have roof construction here. That's where students will attend, probably in the middle school library because it's air-conditioned, and they go in and there's activities that are asynchronous. There's also activities during that week where they can see, participate in a remote live session, but they're traditionally trying to recover credit for courses where they may have the seat time but don't have it pass the course and they don't fall behind. We have a couple eighth grade students who may be very well participating in that program as well because they have some middle school components of that. So that's what we have for kind of the eighth graders going into ninth grade and for the high school students who are recovering credit.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I feel like I.
Go ahead, Chris.
Some terms of the. Credit recovery, do we have like an estimate of numbers of how many students we?
I can, I can get that to you to be very weak, and Mike, you know, it's usually around 15, I think, students who take advantage of that program. But let me, let me, that's a guess. And so let me drop the, the board an email with how many students we traditionally have signed up for that.
No, he was talking about the summer credit recovery programs. But John's report, to Muriel's point, John's report said that we had, he was pushing a 100% graduation rate. There were a few kids in the wings. Do you know what, can you ask John about that?
I can get an update on that as well.
Anybody else have questions? Sorry, Sal.
I feel like, I feel like I left you with more confusion than clarification, but.
Well, I'm sure we'll post, as far as the summer programs, I'm sure we'll put a nice posting, something on the website for parents to check, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Our guidance counselors are in contact with parents and families to make sure that they're registered for these programs. Our teachers are talking to students, so I'm very assured that we, you know, we'll make sure we get to the students that we need to get to. Last but not least, yesterday, you, you had me, I've done some periodic updates in terms of our conversations around merger, mergers of athletic programs, right? So yesterday, we finally were able to, I'll say heard some cats because trying to schedule superintendents and A.D.s this time of year was, was a little difficult, but Diane did the, was up for the task. So yesterday I had all six superintendents from Columbia County, and we also invited the superintendent from SCODAC, although that's Rensler County there and close to geographic proximity to us. So it could very well work that if we, if we want to merge programs with someplace like SCODAC, that could work. So the conversation was very productive. I began by sharing out the spreadsheet that I've shared with the board, showing them that our methodology in trying to identify the areas for which we believe we have strong participation and we have some sustainability and where we have some areas where we would love to strengthen and perhaps even enhance some of our teams and participation. You've heard me talk about examples like tennis where we have three players, and although we may have phenomenal players and they participate individually, we have participated in a team competition in tennis in years, and nor have many of the other schools. So tennis would be a great example of where we could potentially easily combine schools. We've mentioned some of these things in the past. Those are also sports that are ripe for testing the waters because they, the students could actually practice at their individual school, and then when they needed to practice together, they could come together, unlike we've talked about football in the past where as team sports, it's much more difficult to practice individually. You need to be practicing together. Another area that we discussed was bowling. We have a, you've heard me mention that we have a school that's close to us that doesn't have a bowling team. We have a bowling team, but there's small numbers. Could, you know, we open up that program to another district so that they can not only have increased offers, offerings for their students, but then they can also strengthen, you know, our, our sustainability. So what we did is we decided when we were together a good 45 minutes, close to an hour, is that one of the next immediate steps is for them to do the individual analysis like we did. So what I did is I created a larger multi-spreadsheet document that mimicked what we had, where those superintendents have committed with their A.D. directors or athletic directors to go and complete that, those spreadsheets for their individual districts. So they could begin to take a look at where, in many cases, they haven't done an analysis of where they are with their programs. So this is kind of forcing them to talk about it. We talked a little bit about next steps. We're going to be optimistic and hopeful that we can have one more meeting before the end of the school year. That'll really be predicated on, on how long it takes them to do their individual spreadsheets, and we're going to touch basically each, each other in about a week or so. We talked about a few next steps, which is, once that data is available, how do we then decide where some of the connections might be between the different schools? And I think that's, we, we also recognized and expanded the spreadsheet for other sports that we may not currently offer but are offered in other districts because we wanted to capture the total picture. Swimming and wrestling would be two sports that have never necessarily been on our radar screen but are occurring in other districts. So we wanted this to be a kind of a complete picture. We did have some discussions around football and the recent changes between Catskill and Carol Durham and going to an eight or nine man team in Section 9 and conversations in Section 2 where that has seemed to be, has, has seemed to have been a little bit discouraged in lieu of combining full teams. So if you think about some of the previous information we've shared in the, in the section, in Section 2, you generally are seeing the teams combined together to stay as full football rosters as opposed to going down to smaller competitions. And there was some discussion amongst the A.D.s in terms of some of the advantages and disadvantages of, of programs like, is it eight or nine V9? Is it, I can't remember if it's an eight or nine man team. So we had some of those discussions. We did touch upon, but I didn't want to get the group too much in the weeds in terms of, we know there are a lot of barriers to the conversation. We know that there's going to be considerations for cost and transportation and and, and I did, I did have to acknowledge that Andrew from New Lebanon was on the call and he shared some of the experience that they have had with Berlin and some of the wonderful outcomes that they're experiencing as well. But he also admitted that even with that merger, they don't have cross-country. So it doesn't mean that they wouldn't be interested in working with Chatham on a cross-country, you know, arrangement. And we talked a little bit about the sub-varsity mergers too, which is something we learned, remember, more recently where if we get away from the conversations around larger varsity teams, there still could be some conversations around the idea that a sub-varsity merger was one where, once you've registered for a particular sport, let's say fall football, if you will, if two schools don't find that they have enough numbers, because it's not a varsity team, as long as they have conversations within 10 days of that registration period, they can apply to the section to do a sub-varsity merger. So we discussed all of that. I think it was somewhat new to a few people and somewhat very familiar to others. And, but I'd like to think that at the end of the day, my conclusion is, we had a conversation that had not previously taken place, and it's a good starting. So that's kind of my update in regard to what we're doing there.
That's great. Thanks for doing that, Sal. I think, you know, we, we, we listened, we heard a lot in the fall, late fall, winter. I want to make sure we address it, but I think that what you've done is probably the gold standard for, for process establishment.
And I should, you know, I know Fred, you've been an inspiration to this. One of the things I shared on the, at the onset of the meeting was that we didn't want to end up in the same situation we did last year, which was to be having this conversation too late in the game to make decisions, and that's why we're having it now. So. I also said that it wouldn't be a bad idea if they, in summer, when it's a little quieter, that they, you know, obviously I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be leading it, but they, they might want to put a round table together and have some discussions where they can spend some sufficient time and, and talk to me about this. Certainly would be advisable. And.
I'm just going to turn it over to Mike for some brief comments. Real quick on, on the operational side, I do want to thank Deb also for coming to me, I think in October, about, you know, we're going to have to have a machine, we're going to have to do all this process. It was, actually went perfectly. It was such a smooth process. So thanks for all her hard work. I just had to fund it and sign a few pieces of paper, but she did the brunt of that work. So I appreciate that. Buildings and grounds, I want to thank baseball softball track getting the fields ready, you know, with, we had our baseball team playing Saturday for the sectional title. Girls had a heartbreaking loss last night, but they prepared the fields before practices and all that. So I want to, you know, shout out to the boys and girls teams. They had awesome years. That was, that was fun to watch. And last thing is playground equipment. My, some of the community members have asked me any updates on the elementary, getting the slides, and there's, you know, we had some damage to some that was done the previous year. So I have, we put the order in, there was quite a long lead time, so I'm expecting that. I'm going to follow up to get that probably this month, and we'll put it in over the summer. So we'll have those ready to go. That's all I had of my report.
All right, so I guess logistically, we've acknowledged Mr. Stead and Mr. Simon, but we have to, I need a motion to grant tenure. The first one is R77 be resolved, Board of Education, grant tenure to Brian Simon in the area of People Personnel Services effective July 1, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and R78 is be resolved that the Board of Education, Chatham Central School District, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of the school, hereby appoints Mike Stead, Michael Stead, to tenure in the Assistant Principal tenure area effective July 1, 2024. This appointment terminates the leave of absence from his former position in the elementary tenure area effective June 30, 2024. They have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Congratulations again. Now, we have some new business, and that's a policy update from Ms. Pirro. This is a big one.
Well, sort of a.
Sort of a big one?
Sort of a big one. Okay, so we did manage to get the 7,000s and 8,000s finished. But by the time we did get them cleaned up and finished, the board would not have had any time to look at them. So we're trying to push this off, and Sally, you can help me with the dates here. We are thinking that we might do first reading June 25th. That gives you guys, I'll make sure that you have an opportunity because we do have a few new ones that you're going to want to look at. And we were also kind of stumbling on process. Since we're merging, several of like the health policies are all going into one policy. Procedurally, we needed to figure out, okay, how do we do that? Do we rescind the old policy? Do we, you know, that sort of thing. It's just, it's, so we'll get all that squared away, June 25th. That gives us a little time to get that squared away, you know.
And the second reading could be scheduled for July 9th. And then we could then shuffle this package off to NISBA for renumbering. And in a perfect theoretical world, when it comes back, the policy committee, it should be a breeze from there on in because now we're relying to the NISBA standard, and when we're notified by our subscription that there's a legislative change or there's some issue, or there could be something local, but it should not be as monumental of a task as it's been over the last several years. So great work.
That's quite an accomplishment, I would say.
So you've taken three different policy committees, people to, you know, chairmen to get this across the finish line. It's been taking a long time, but yeah, I'm pretty excited. We're getting close. But so like Sal said, it'll be at our annual organizational meeting that we'll be doing, since Sal will need to be here to see that, but we'll figure it out. Thanks.
Congratulations, Mary Ann. I need a motion to approve the summer curriculum projects, and these, I believe, are the same ones that Dr. Gangelo was referring to earlier.
Well, these are the, these are the ones where Dr. Rude puts out RFPs to the staff. Staffs are projects that, yeah, that have come and have been vetted by the building principals and have been sanctioned financially through Mr. Chuddy's office. And then, as you know, once those are complete, they'll come to you for approval in usually August or September.
Thank you for the update on that. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry, were there any questions? There are attachments to these. First time I forgot my note, my. Motion to accept the results of the 2024 Annual Budget Vote and Election. Second, hold on one second, I gotta read a little bit. Legal documents. R80 be resolved that the Board of Education accept the results of the 2024-25 Annual Budget Vote and Election held on May 21st, 2024, 2024, as reported by Deborah Potenberg, District Clerk and Chairperson of the Annual Meeting, as it follows. Proposition 1, the budget with 391 yes votes and 159 no, passed. Proposition 2, the capital reserve with 384 yes votes and 161 no, passed. Board of Education seats Linda Collette with 323 votes and Nikki Lundee with 382. Two elected members will fill the two three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Put a break with, and say, Beth, on behalf of the board, I think it's safe to say that we thank you so much for your long service. I mean, what an amazing commitment. This is a lot of work. Why anybody would want to do it more than once is beyond me. But you have, time and time again, helped this district through some very challenging moments to create, you know, to get us to the point where we have had a successful administration and, and are also ushering a new era. So. So thank you so much for, for all you've done.
Thank you. My, I think my kids are very excited about it.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the consensus agenda I through K. I don't need to be so formal on this. Can I have a motion? Oh, any questions, I'm sorry. Are there any questions on the? Thank you. All right, may I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, we are at items for future agenda. Does anyone on the board have an item for future agenda at this time? Okay, moving on. I will need a motion to enter executive session, right? We're still going to the executive session?
I don't know if you want to say, did you see a public comment?
Oh, no, I didn't.
It's not here.
All right, just, just for. Okay, and at this time, the board would hear any public comment related specifically to tonight's agenda. Again, the, the open comment was first and the agenda comment is second. Anyone online, Dr. D'Angelo?
No, I thought somebody was texting me, but no. No hands.
Okay, all right, so now I need a motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we do not see the need to return to open session. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And can I have a, yeah, a motion to appoint the district clerk pro temp, Dr. D'Angelo? May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.